Good evening and welcome everyone to the February 18th, 2020 regular meeting of the Board of Education of Springfield Public Schools. We will note that all Board members are present and I will turn the floor over to Stephen. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we are pleased to introduce you to two students from Cherokee Middle School. If you could both come forward, we have Pearson Hosinga and Jordan Churchill. You can come forward, please. So Pearson is in eighth grade and Jordan is in seventh grade and they represent two Cherokee students. If you want to stand right here, that'd be great, you can face the board. They represent two of our students who have individually qualified to advance to state competition in archery. So their individual scores qualified them for state archery championship competition.
Awesome.
Principal Illick also said that two archery teams have also qualified for state from Cherokee. So this is a continuation of an outstanding archery program at SPS. In addition to their archery skills, both Pearson and Jordan are academic achievers at Cherokee and we know that their family and school community are very proud of them. If you're here tonight to support Pearson and Jordan, would you please stand or wave at us so we can celebrate you as well? And at this time, for those who are able, we ask that you stand while Pearson and Jordan lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Whenever you're ready, gentlemen.
(Pleading) Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is going very well.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we will now continue with our Honoring Excellence by pausing to celebrate you, our Board of Education. During February each year, we pause for Missouri School Board Recognition Week and tonight we want to express appreciation to each of you, our school board. You dedicate countless hours of your time to supporting our students and our staff and tonight we have several ways that we want to say thank you. And let's begin with a short video.
Springfield Public Schools may seem like a large school district. We have 25,000 students, 4,000 employees, and more than 50 schools.
But we have one key thing in common.
A school board that focuses on making our school district a great place to work and learn. We are grateful for the many hours they volunteer.
We appreciate the expertise they bring to the board table.
We are thankful for the support they show by attending activities and events. In honor of Missouri School Board Recognition Week, we would like to say thank you.
Thank you.
Gracias.
De school.
Shukran le amalek al jahit.
No matter how you say it, it means thank you.
So we first want to say a special thanks to the McGregor Elementary students and staff who were a key part of making that video possible. And now we have some special guests who would like to share their gratitude. We're joined tonight by Mrs. Emily Franco, Mrs. Brittany Groves, and Ms. Elizabeth Lalande. Would you all please come forward with your students as well? These three professionals coordinate the Hickory Hills Elementary and Middle School Kind Clubs. And I invite them to start by introducing their students and share just a little bit about what they've been up to this month.
Well, these are elementary students. We have two fifth graders with us. We have Nora and Paige and this is Addie, our third grader. There are just three. We have 20 in our Kind Club. And then on the middle school side, do you want to call them?
Sure, yeah. So this is Ms. Nia Wayley and this is Mr. Logan Club. They have been not just honorary members, but chair members of my Kind Club that has been going on for the past three years. And just on the middle school side, we have over 60 members.
Wow.
Fantastic.
And this last week, we've had a great kindness challenge on the elementary side that our Kind Club has got to share and kind of orchestrate throughout the elementary school. And we challenged all students in the elementary school to do up to 50 acts of kindness between picking up trash on the floor, thanking a school counselor, thanking a teacher, doing stuff for the community, just little acts of kindness here and there and to mark them and to turn them in. And we've made a chain across our school of all the kindness that they've done.
Awesome.
And so one of the kindnesses that we wanted to do is give you guys peace. Yes, we just want to give them up.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you. Beautiful. Really nice, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. We really appreciate you being here.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
So beautiful.
Super kind.
Beautiful.
Love it.
So beautiful.
We're just very fortunate. It's a really great community at Hickory Hills, our Spartans. They're kind each and every day, but we really just wanted to take a week to celebrate our kids, take our clubs just to the next level and spread that love, just bring a match of kindness and wanting to do something special for our board as well. So thank you. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, everyone.
You'll get prominent space in our offices. Everyone will be nice.
We love our walls.
A pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll also find a certificate of appreciation to you from the Missouri School Boards Association
at each of your places tonight. As we continue, next we want to recognize Parkview High School senior Alyssa Schilling. Alyssa, would you come forward, please? Alyssa has been named Youth of the Year by the Boys and Girls Clubs of Springfield. She has been a member of the Musgrave Unit for a decade and has served as an important source of stability in her life. At Parkview, Alyssa has found a great sense of belonging. She participates in the GO CAPS education strand. She's active in advanced placement courses and excels at school while also working to support herself. Her grit, her determination, her advocacy are among the reasons she was named Youth of the Year this month. As a result of that honor, Alyssa has received $16,000 in scholarships from the Boys and Girls Clubs. In addition, she has received $16,000 from Missouri State University for committing to attend MSU. So the annual Youth of the Year Award winner is selected from 12 Youth of the Month recipients in the Springfield area. They each submit essays, they complete interviews and answer questions from a panel of judges. So this is a very special honor and we're so proud of Alyssa. So join us in congratulating her.
Stephen, she told me she's looking forward to asking her a bunch of questions.
She works and supports herself.
I'm kidding. We are so proud of you. So proud of you.
So now we are excited to celebrate with you our Power of One recognition for this month and this is our story, David Getz.
My name is David Getz. I'm the Lead HVAC Technician for SPS.
David works for me in the Facilities Department. He manages all the controls for the HVAC systems throughout the entire district.
Pretty much everything I do is kind of behind the scenes. Every morning, I start off by going through all the sites, looking for different issues. And then I'm sending technicians out to the site, trying to get stuff up and running as quick as possible.
If a building is reporting that they're cold or they're hot, whichever it may be, whichever season it may be, David is the point of contact that finds the resolution to it.
I'm trying to make sure that the students and staff have comfortable working environment. They come in, everything's not really cold or really hot, is that the temperature it's supposed to be so they're able to come in and not worry about being cold or being hot and they're able to worry about actually trying to learn.
David's superpower is determination. David never gives up. If there's a problem in the district and it's a major problem, David is one of the first people who gets those phone calls. David is always willing to come in and work whatever it takes to get the buildings up and running with HVAC and heating and cooling. At times, you know, it's overnight and long weekends.
I think it's just the way I'm built. My dad was in construction when I was young and owned his own company and I watched the work ethic he had and I think that transferred to me. So whenever something has to be done, I do what has to be done to get it done, whether that's working 10 hours, 12 hours. I'm just going to get it done if there's any way possible.
David, congrats for your recognition. Well deserved.
Hey.
That's nice.
They never want to come out.
Congratulations. Thank you, sir.
Awesome. That's really nice. Awesome.
So congratulations to David and to all of our Power of One recipients and continue to follow along on social media where we're continuing to highlight stories of heroes from across our district. For our partner recognition tonight, we are honored to celebrate two organizations who are supporting our continuing effort to expand opportunities for our students to participate in engaging, relevant, and personal learning experiences. Thanks to Springfield Little Theater and the Foundation for Springfield Public Schools, our students will have the opportunity to immerse themselves in learning through the lens of the fine and performing arts. Beginning in August 2020, SPS will partner with Springfield Little Theater and the Foundation for Springfield Public Schools to open the Academy of Fine and Performing Arts Magnet School, a unique learning opportunity for 5th grade students. We'd like to introduce representatives from both of these partner organizations. Joining us from Springfield Little Theater tonight is the Education Director Lori Ann Dunn and representing us from the Foundation of Springfield Public Schools Natalie Murdock, Executive Director, Tina Pham, Peter Lai, Mark Mayer, and Stephen Gents, President-Elect. Would you all please come forward?
Thank you. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Should we remind the lovely folks who've been honored that they don't have to stay for the rest of it? You're out of here. I wasn't talking to the front row. I knew you guys weren't. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you. And now we go into the more formal part of the agenda, the business of the school board. And the first item of that is that we approve the agenda, except for tonight, as presented.
Send it.
Thank you. Alina, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Charles. Are we ready to vote? Please vote.
I'm going to have to log back in because I'm not authentic. Whatever that means.
The eyes have it. And one was very authentic. Our next item is public comments to address agenda items. And I have six people who have signed up to speak, seven who have signed up to speak. And so just what I'd like to do is, to all those who have signed up to speak, is please pay attention to the time that's allowed, out of courtesy for all the other speakers. And then listen to this, please. "The Board of Education welcomes comments from the audience about the issues being discussed. It's recommended that requests to speak be submitted prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments will be limited to five minutes for each speaker and will be timed by the Board Secretary. It's inappropriate to address the Board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or in the district office. The Board uses this time in our meeting to listen to comments and/or concerns from the public, but we will not comment nor engage with speakers during this meeting. If you have materials that you wish to share, please provide them to our Board Secretary prior to speaking and she will distribute them to the Board members." Our first speaker is Mary R. Byrne. Welcome, Dr. Byrne.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to address a contract reported to the Board in Item 4 on tonight's agenda as well as the proposal under Item 10.02, Curriculum Adoption. On February 11, I sent a PowerPoint to this Board with information explaining that no other body is responsible for the adoption of curriculum for this district. I provided excerpts of DESI publications announcing the State Board of Education had adopted Missouri learning standards at their April 2016 meeting with the suggestion that, quote-unquote, "new standards" were different from Common Core in mathematics and that the same board had adopted in 2010. Within three months, DESI recommended that district administrators and educators refer to the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics Standards and the illustrative mathematics curriculum and materials for the development of district mathematics programs. Both the NCTM standards and IM are designed by architects of Common Core. In fact, this IM Alpha Pilot Overview for K-5 references the Common Core standards, not Missouri learning standards. And it is the Alpha Program that is being funded through our SPS budget. DESI did not violate state law that prohibits the department from mandating curriculum, but it could be alleged that making the recommendation to Missouri educators and administrators that they update curricula with Common Core state standards and curricula controlled by nonprofits other than the NGA and CCSSO, which was the original Common Core standards, to adopt the same standards under a different name could be alleged to be deception. Furthermore, I provided data comparing SPS students' Algebra I EOC scores for the same period of time as the 6th, 7th, and 8th grade scores were reported to the Board in November 2019. That is, the period from 2017 to 2019. It showed that during that period, the gap between SPS's average EOC scores and the state average was increasing every year. Finally, I reported DESI publicized that the change standards required completely new assessments administered in 2017 and 2018, but that the technical manual submitted by the test vendor DRC indicated they weren't completely new, that sections of the previous tests since 2013 had been incorporated into those tests, with the addition of a few items that were developed by Missouri educators. The change in test vendors was due to the sale of CBT by McGraw-Hill to DRC and DESI was no longer permitted to pay membership into SBAC after a judgment in February 2015. But the pool of SBAC items developed by McGraw-Hill were developed together with DRC. That's the McGraw-Hill press release of them getting the contract from SBAC. So DRC contracted with McGraw-Hill to develop the SBAC items. CBT transferred from McGraw-Hill to DRC. There was only a transfer of name. It was the same data pool, the item pool. And that item pool was free to the vendors because it was funded by federal dollars. DESI got a break because they no longer had to pay for SBAC membership, but they got the same tests. That's all that meant. So any spin about having completely new assessments is just that, spin. All right? We cannot attribute the decline in our test scores to completely new standards and completely new tests. That is, that's a myth. That's my point. So for you to make an informed decision about the purchase of IM, you should know that you have, you will be purchasing the same material, the same concepts, the same item pools that you have been purchasing since 2013. All right? So that's one thing. This is the judgment from the Cole County Judge, signed by Judge Green, saying we couldn't pay membership. That did not prohibit us from accessing the items. This is a memo from DESI, these are all in your pocket, saying that there were fiscal cuts and restrictive language added to the 2016 assessment appropriation which prohibited state administrators of smarter balanced consortium grade level summative assessments. The restrictive language was about membership and SBAC. It did not change the item pool. So what's my point? If there were no harm continuing Common Core standards, I wouldn't be standing here. But Common Core standards have done harm in lost opportunity to learn in the state of Missouri, throughout the entire country, on every measurement the State Board uses and in Springfield Public Schools. There is no reason to assume Springfield is different than any other district in this country. And the point is, we've got to change.
Thank you, Dr. Byrne.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker is Margaret Watson.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, Margaret.
Board members, Dr. Jungman, Cabinet members, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm Margaret Watson. I began working for Springfield Public Schools in January of 1995, just a couple of years ago, teaching early childhood special education at Paudin Elementary. Currently, I'm an educational diagnostician on the assessment team for early childhood special education at Shining Stars Early Childhood Center. Our program has never been named Shining Stars. We've never been referred to as, we have always been referred to as, the Early Childhood Special Ed Program, or EXC. I'm speaking tonight to request you to follow Board Policy FF regarding naming and changing names of facilities as it applies to Shining Stars Early Childhood Center. As you know, the policy states, under existing facilities and additions, once a building or facility has been named, that name will remain in the building or facility unless changed by the Board. Names will be changed using the same process outlined above. Names may be changed when a specific program or theme the facility was named for changes and the current name no longer supports the objectives of the facility or due to additions or renovations of an existing facility. While it's unclear that changing the name of Shining Stars Early Childhood Center meets this policy's requirements, I do understand that the building was initially named by administration and not by the school board. Should you determine that a change in names is necessary, I ask that you follow Board policy by forming a committee as you have for other buildings. Our early childhood special education staff and community should have an opportunity to voice their recommendations to the Board just as early childhood wonder years did. As you know, communication is key to the relationship between staff, administration, and our community. When there is no communication between stakeholders and the Board regarding such an important decision as changing a school name, the relationship is affected. Staff and stakeholders do not feel valued. Forming a committee to review names and make a recommendation to the Board gives stakeholders a voice and aids in the transparency of communication. Please follow Board Policy FF, allowing Shining Stars Early Childhood Center staff and community members an opportunity to communicate their recommendations to the Board. Thank you for your consideration in this matter.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephanie. I may mispronounce this and if I do, I apologize. Loom?
Yes, it's her.
Good. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Stephanie Loom and I am an educational diagnostician at Shining Stars Early Childhood Center. This is my 11th year with Springfield Public Schools and I'm happy to say that all of my 11 years of service are with early childhood special education. I come to you this evening to respectfully request that you consider leaving the name of our building as it has been for the last nine years, Shining Stars Early Childhood Center. When I first started my career with SPS, our program was housed throughout the district. Many of my fellow educators who are still teaching in this program today were teaching in modular trailers. When we moved into the building at 2525 West College, it was a celebration for many, for years of hard work advocating for a centralized location with age-appropriate materials and furnishings and where early childhood special education teachers could collaborate together in the best interest of their students. Shining Stars was administratively named, however, its name embodies the vision of our staff. We believe in educating the whole child to achieve their highest potential. It may seem cliche, however, we truly believe that every child who walks through our building is a shining star. It is our responsibility to prepare them for tomorrow by providing engaging, relevant, and personalized experiences today. And this begins for our district's youngest learners at Shining Stars Early Childhood Center. This experience is ingrained in their educational career and I know that because I'm fortunate and blessed to have had many past students and families visit me and reflect on their positive experiences at Shining Stars. I respectfully ask that you consider keeping this name as it is, which reflects the community of children we serve. Many of these children are faced with unimaginable challenges in many different and dynamic ways. However, as myself and the 75 staff members who work in this building believe, they are all shining stars forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker is Mike White. Evening, Mike.
Good evening, all. Dr. Jungman, President Rosenberg and Board members. I promise to be brief. I was thrilled to death to pick up Monday's news leader last week and learn of the possibility of renaming an existing early childhood center or Dr. Arthur Mallory. It seemed a perfect ending for the work of our naming committee that started last October. After compiling a long list of candidates and engaging in considerable discussion, in mid-November, we offered three names and that quickly became two when the Brown family bowed out, from which you might choose in naming the new center on the Carver property. Our committee chose those names by unanimous vote and left the final selection entirely up to you. And you wisely chose Ms. Ada Fulbright. Perfect. Except Dr. Mallory, with his many ties to early childhood education, is such a deserving candidate also. Then on that Monday morning, I saw this proposal to rename the Shining Stars facility in his honor and that you also have a pathway to do that without creating a new committee. So I hope that is exactly what you'll do. Again, we submitted our choices by a unanimous vote and without further recommendation until tonight. The Arthur Mallory Early Childhood Center has a real ring to it, doesn't it? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Seaver.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment in regards to the transportation stuff y'all have been doing and I really just wanted to say thank you for everyone's work, Ms. Embry, and what you guys have done so far and the transpar group. On the last meeting, I heard things like, this can be justified far beyond the dollars. You have to find a way to do this. You've got to keep pushing this thing. Let's get moving on this. And as a parent and someone that's been involved in this, it got me kind of excited. I was very happy to hear that and I really believe that, you know, of everything you guys do to keep kids safe, this is probably the, probably the biggest thing within your reach. That's, it's not easy. I mean, I get that. Whether it's tier change or how you go about, it's not going to be easy, but it is probably the one thing that can keep kids the safest. So I just wanted to say thank you and I appreciate what you guys are doing.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Natalie Seaver. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm Natalie Seaver. I am related to Mike Seaver. He's my spouse. And I wanted to say thank you to the Board. I am also encouraged. I was here two weeks ago when the agenda item on the bus thing situation came up and I was also very encouraged. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I want to just say, on a personal note, that the reason I started being interested in this issue is that I had a school administrator give me advice that was to allow my daughter to walk home from school following a secluded greenways trail from Pershing Middle School to Lone Pine, cross Lone Pine, and then walk up Battlefield Road to our home on Glenstone and Battlefield in that quadrant. So, I think a couple of weeks ago, I heard the comment that it might be an imposition to families, and while I'm sure that someone will call and complain about going to a three-tier system, I can assure you that I have talked to hundreds of other families who have said they've gotten the same kind of advice for walking their child home after school, and I think that they would be so encouraged as well to see their child on a bus, to get them home safely. And so, I just wanted to say thank you because the other option that we have right now is carpooling with a family that has hopefully the same schedule that we do. You know, hopefully their kids have the same activities that we do, ours do, after school. I know that one family that we had helping us last year now has a son in basketball, so they are not able to help anymore. So we have a different family this year, and we're just hoping that she can continue as well. She's a stay-at-home mom, and she helps us, and we're very grateful for her. And so, you know, but she has a life too, and sometimes things come up, and she can't always, you know, bring our kids home at the same time, which that's no fault of anyone's, except that's life. So then, Mike and I are juggling kids, or juggling work schedules, and we're trying to figure out how we can get our kids home. I have been in the car lineup at Pershing multiple times, where I've got my laptop open, and I'm working as I am waiting to pick up my kids, VPN, through, you know, VPN to Missouri State. So, I wanted you to hear the plight of a mother, you know, in my shoes, and I wanted to say that if you could consider a three-tier system, that would just be fantastic. And I think that this helps all families across all socioeconomic backgrounds, and I just, I think that that would be fantastic. So, thank you very much. Thank you for listening to me, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Myles Pearson. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. I just pretty much wanted to reiterate what both of the Seavers have said. That has been my experience with the busing and finding rides and carpools, and I wanted to say thank you to you all for your work on this and your continuing work on the transportation and busing issue. And I hope that we continue to move on and find a good solution that benefits the most people, or the most kids in Springfield. No, it's not the easiest issue, but I appreciate the work you've done so far and your commitment to continue to do it, and I hope that if input is needed from parents, you will consider us as experts on to what our children need as well, and feel free to reach out to us. And just thank you so much. I think it's a really important thing you all are doing, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other speakers? No? Okay. Then we will move into the consent agenda, which is items 3.01 through 5.01. The recommended action is that we would approve the previous minutes, the financial reports, and the personnel reports, 3.01 through 5.01. Can I hear a motion?
Go move.
I'll take it from Jill. Is there a second?
Second.
From Charles. Thank you. Any discussion on the items? Please vote. Guys, have it. We move on to item six, the treasurer's report, and we welcome Carol to the Board table.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello. We have posted for you our typical financial reports for your review in advance, and we continue to hold true on our projected operating fund balance for June 30 of 2020 at 18.09%. And that represents stability, and part of that budget review continues, and we have very minimal recommendations for budget changes this month. A slight increase to revenue of $35,752, and a slight decrease of expenditures, $9,316. So, that contributes to that continuing fund balance. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Any questions or comments for Carol? All right. Then, the action is that the Board approves the treasurer's report as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Alina. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Charles. Are you ready to vote? Please vote. Guys, have it. Item seven is information reports, and there are no information reports. The next item is Board Policy and the adoptions and revisions, and there are no policies for review on new business. There's no new business items, but we do have several items of unfinished business. What I'll do is I'll turn it back over to you, Carol.
And I would like to invite Mr. Sam Schreiber with BKD to the podium. As you know, you met with Sam during closed session, following our last board meeting, to receive the draft report on records retention, and he's here this evening to provide you with the final report.
Thank you, Carol. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, thank you once again for having me this evening. As Carol mentioned, this most recent audit covered record retention, the district's record retention practices. That included student records, financial records, personnel records. The specific areas we evaluated were the district's policies and procedures, their internal controls, training programs, compliance with the state of Missouri's record retention schedule, and the district's methods of storage. Since we discussed the report in great detail a few weeks ago in closed session, I'm just going to highlight a few things. This audit received a satisfactory rating, which is the highest rating that we give. We noted seven observations. Six were classified as low risk, and one was medium risk. I'm just going to highlight the medium risk one, so that was related to student record backups. So we noted that older student records are kept in either microfiche or microfilm form, and either have no backups at all, or their backups are stored in the same building as the originals. So we just, well, our main recommendation was to just go ahead and digitize all student records, because that would just eliminate the need for student backups, but if that's not feasible, then we would recommend that you create backups for all student records, and that all backups be kept in a separate building from the originals. Management agreed with our recommendations and said that they were going to assess the options as what was best for the district, and then will take action accordingly. That's all I wanted to highlight. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for our auditor?
No, sir.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work. The next item, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, John. John's reminding me that we do have to take, we have to vote on this, and the recommended actions, the Board of Education accepts the internal audit as presented. Is there a motion to accept that?
I'll move.
Thank you, Jill. Is there a second to the motion? Thank you, Charles. Are we ready to vote? Please vote. There we go. Thank you, John. Next item is curriculum adoption. This was presented at the last board meeting, and there is recommended action tonight. And so, just to get this on the table, let's start with the recommended action, get a motion, and if there's any discussion, we'll have it. The recommended action is that the Board approves the recommended instructional resource materials as presented. Can I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Thank you, Charles. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Denise? Thank you. Any discussion on this? I do want to, I do want to say simply that one of the things I learned this year, and there's, every time this comes around, I learn something new, is while this is billed as curriculum adoption, it really isn't curriculum adoption. It's the support materials. It's a curriculum resource. That, that I really appreciated Dr. Pilli last board meeting reminding us, that curriculum is written by Springfield Public Schools for Springfield Public students, and it's the teachers that write the curriculum, which is, I think, as it should be. So, I will be voting for this. Is there any, are there any other comments from the Board?
Appreciate you reminding us of that. I remember thinking that was really helpful of her to come and express that. They also deserve credit for that incredible work that they do.
Yep.
Don't need to give that to someone far away. That's their work.
Yep. All right, are we ready to vote, then? Please vote. Guys, have it. Now, the next, next item Carol's going to visit with us about it. Thank you.
Yes. So, this first agenda item references Board Policy BF, excuse me, and that is the School Board Policy Regarding the Process on Suspension of Policies. And it indicates that policies of the Board may be suspended at an official meeting of the Board by a majority vote of all Board members when the proposed suspension has been described in writing, or a unanimous vote of all Board members when the proposed suspension has not been described in writing. So, to that, I have provided a posting for you that describes in writing the reason this recommendation is brought to you. And Mr. White, the Chair of the Naming Committee, spoke earlier regarding some of the facts. I'm going to revisit some of those. That you originally did appoint a committee that included Mr. Mike White as Chair, also included Charlotte Harden, Mike Holman, Dana Carroll as community members, Administrator Missy Riley, Director of Early Childhood and Parents as teachers, teacher Sarah Fox, Armani Wonder Years Program, Amanda Snyder, Fremont Wonder Years Program, and student Michael Owlesley, Kickapoo Student Council President. The Naming Committee did meet in the month of November a few times, and at the November 19 meeting, Mr. White as Chair provided name recommendations. Excuse me. During the December 10 meeting, you had lengthy discussion and reviewed the names and determined to consider further the options. At the January 21, 2020 meeting, you voted to name the new early childhood center located on the Carver Middle School, the Ada Fulbright Early Childhood Center. Due to the discussion regarding the remaining name, Dr. Arthur Mallory and his work to develop and expand early childhood in the state of Missouri, Board Policy FF may be suspended regarding the formation of an additional naming committee for the naming of another early childhood center located at 2525 West College Road, Springfield, Missouri. The facility was rented beginning March 2010, excuse me, and no official board vote to name the facility has occurred. The building was informally named the Shining Star Center after the Shining Stars program, and it serves early childhood special education students. The building was later purchased in June 2016. So, at this time, this recommendation is for your discussion.
Let me start with, as I did the last, the last item, was start with a, the recommended action is that the Board of Education approved the suspension of Board Education Policy FF facility names due to the recommendation described below. And that recommendation described below is generally what Carol just presented to us. Is there a motion? Put that on the table. Jerry moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right. We want to discuss this motion?
I do have a question. Carol was, and I probably should remember this, but I don't. Was there anyone from Shining Stars involved on the committee? I know Missy certainly, in terms of oversight.
No, there were no teachers or staff representative of the Shining Stars facility on the committee.
Well, at the risk of making this seem more complicated, I really am surprised to hear from you all tonight that you don't like this plan that I thought was well-vetted, as was pointed out by a group who talked about these things, and it seemed like we were moving in this direction. And it's not something that, I'll be honest, it makes me uncomfortable to make you sad or uncomfortable with all the work that you put into this. It feels late in the game to object, is kind of what I'm trying to work out in my mind, to be honest with you.
I need to find our speakers.
Yes, I'm looking at them. Some of them I've known for a while, and I just feel like, wow, I might have, wish to have more time to process this, because, I mean, Mike knows, how many times did we have these meetings? I recognize that it wasn't really spoken of, that we were contemplating both naming opportunities at the time. I recognize. Is there any way, I mean, are we in, does this have to be decided tonight? I guess, is what, that's where I am.
That's my question. Whatever the ultimate outcome it is, I mean, that's why I asked the question. I mean, is there something essential about tonight? And heaven, I mean, I spend most of my life in committee meetings. I am not fond of.
Really? I've never heard you say that before.
But I think there is, there potentially, potentially may be much to be gained. I, too, was a bit surprised, caught off guard.
I've been writing notes, trying to figure it out. Like, what did I miss? And then I figured out, I don't think we missed anything, you and I. Are we, are we in a reasonable place to say, can we slow down a minute? And I hate to say this, but have a, it's not that I don't appreciate your work, Mr. White, but would we possibly allow them to have a couple more meetings to contemplate how we proceed on this?
The only thing I will just mention is I think there have been several people that have reached out to me that are from Shining Stars, that retired from Shining Stars, that are not here to speak on behalf of the name change. So, we're hearing from those that came tonight, but those who have sent emails and responded that are delighted with the name change. So, again, let's just throw that piece in.
This is not an implicit critique of Dr. Mallory. Please don't misunderstand me. That's, that's.
Or me coming off of my position that we're, I'm going to vote to name it for him. I just wonder if it would be of any value to slow down a bit, to allow them to speak their piece, because they at least feel they haven't had that opportunity. And I can contemplate that since it wasn't called that from the start, that we were contemplating both of these name changes. But if that's a bad idea?
As I understand it, this is, Shining Stars is the name of the program and the center. Is that correct? No?
I understand from Ms. Davis that it has been referred to in the past as the Shining Star Center.
Sign in front of the building says Shining Stars. Early Childhood. I know the facility.
We didn't name it. We don't know. Fairly explicit.
Yeah. I saw somewhere in here that it was named a program, but, okay. Okay.
I think there is potential symbolic value.
We could not name it as long as it was leased property. So then, when we purchased it in 2016, we did not follow up with being there a name. So I just continued to keep, just to use.
Called what it was called once it opened.
Facility colloquially known as Shining Stars.
Yeah, that's a simple name. We shall not call it that.
I'm just going to create a symbol. I think there's potential symbolic value, and maybe real value, and if there's nothing crucial about tonight, I think tomorrow, Jill's going down, I'm not going to specify a number of meetings, but I, too, was caught off guard. And I don't, I don't feel the urgency unless I'm missing something, which is never out of the question.
You're talking about board meetings?
Here's, or, committee meetings or anything else.
Yeah, here's, here's.
But if you don't follow the adopt, the process to suspend policy and proceed, you would then go likely back to FF and rename a new committee. Which is a board action. That committee would then begin meeting, and then that committee would bring a minimum of two names back to you, again, for your consideration in the future. of two names back to you, again, for your consideration in the future. So that's, that's your two options.
Would the naming, the, a new committee be done tonight, or would we have to wait to a future board meeting to do that?
You can, you can name the committee whenever you want, but I don't have, we don't have an administrative list, right?
No, I, we don't have anything.
Right. We don't have a committee recommendation.
Okay.
Because this is what, the Board directed us last meeting to do this, to come back with this. If you redirect us, we'll redirect, but this is your call, so.
Well, I'm just gonna be frank, I don't feel comfortable just going forward tonight with people whose heart and soul is committed to that place, not feeling comfortable with this. And that wasn't what we directed that group to do. They were picking a name for something else, and we segwayed, which seemed like a good plan, and it may be a great plan. I would simply like to slow down. I am going to say I would rather us have a new committee and let them speak their piece.
All right, we have a, a, a motion on the floor, and we-
Needs to be voted up or down?
We can, we can vote it up, we can vote it down. If you vote it up, that means that we would go on to the next item on the agenda and look at the naming recommendation. If you vote it down, it means that we will go back and look at the possibility of appointing a committee and probably have something for you all at the next meeting. Okay?
And as a matter of protocol, if the next motion doesn't receive, if it is not moved or seconded, then-
We'll skip it.
You don't need to vote.
If this, if this motion fails, we move on to 10.05. Ready to vote?
No idea what you said, but we'll-
Please vote.
Yes to suspend policy, but no not to.
Now, say that again.
Yes.
The Board of Educ, approve this. So yes is suspension of policy, no is not.
Then go on with the next one.
Correct.
I think I got it right. I think, but no.
I believe, I'm not gonna, but I believe that's what you were messaging.
The noes have it four to three. So we will ask, we will ask Administration to prepare action for next meeting.
For next meeting?
Yep.
A committee, a committee recommendation.
That will be the action at the next meeting.
Because it will have to be appointed committee process.
All right. Moving on to 10.05 Substitute Services. At the last study session, there was a presentation made on the RFP, and so this is, that was our first reading, so this is simply our, our second and final reading for action. And the recommended actions that the Board approves a superintendent or designated to sign a contract authorizing PIMAC Staffing Services, Inc. as the third-party service provider for substitute services. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Jill. Is there a second? Alina, thank you. We ready to vote? Please vote. Motion passes, and we're moving on to 10.06, the Transportation Study Update, and Carol's returning to the podium.
So, this evening, very brief, just a few slides to help us re-center on the work that has transpired. So you know, this has been the journey, a number of discussions and meetings, and that included the Transpar report, January 21st, gave you an update February 4th that included information about potential attendance impact and other information, and then this evening, we are bringing this back to you for additional discussion. So again, to highlight the gap relative to how Springfield Public Schools compares to our statewide peers, this is information that we have gathered over many, many months and have, at your direction, been working toward providing you with the data that you need to make a decision for how we would move forward. And as you can see on this report, Springfield has a high school distance of 3.5 miles or greater, whereas our, or excuse me, our statewide peers, most of them have a two-mile or one-mile or less distance for transportation qualification. The other anomaly to highlight for you is that Springfield Public Schools runs a two-tier system, whereas our statewide peers, those that are more like us, from a free and reduced lunch population, from a size perspective, they're running more tiers, three, four, and five tiers compared to ours. Regional peer comparison is a bit different. We are very, very different than them from the fact that we're an urban community, and so we have different dynamics. But even in that situation, again, our anomaly relative to our regional peers is that Springfield has a 3.5 or greater distance to qualify for transportation services at the high school level, and our regional peers are less than two and less than two. The recommendation from the Transpar group at the board meeting on January 24th provided you with a cost perspective, and the bottom line is that an implementation of the services would cost between 3.96 million to 5.41 million, and that is access for students. It's about providing the high school boundary of a 1.5 mile as opposed to 3.5 miles, and also providing services for students in wanting to, those who want to participate in a magnet They also provided us with information, again, if we retained the same current bell time structure, the same tier structure, again, that 3.9 to 5.41 cost point, but if we did add an additional tier, the so, the cost would be reduced significantly. And they presented two options, and that brought the cost point down to just over a million dollars. Following the January 24 meeting, we did ask Transpar to provide additional information, and that was the cost to reduce the elementary distance from 1.5 miles to 1.0 miles, and they estimated that cost between 66,500 to 447,000 dollars, a bit, again, dependent on the structure that would be implemented. Our team internally identified additional facility needs, but we do not know information relative to how many car, cars would be reduced in transporting students. I would also highlight that you heard that the Transpar people said our transportation team is doing a highly efficient job in utilizing our existing resources. We know that there will be a lot of people impacted by this, and it will take time to journey through this process. So not only do we have the impact on students and their parents, but on our staff and also our partners who are providing before and after care. So we leave this with you this evening for your discussion on how to move forward.
Thank you, Carol. Here's what I'd like to do. I'd like to take this, if, I'd like to have board members offer any discussion, offer any points of view at, at this table tonight, and I'd ultimately like to get this to, get the discussion to a point where we ask them, ask the Administration to give us something at the next meeting that we take some, take a stand. I, I think in my various discussions with you all, that you're probably of a like mind, but I'd like to hear from you first publicly at the table. So, anybody wish to start?
I'll start. I'll be happy to. I'm ready to go now, but to do that, and I really appreciate the speakers tonight for that. I know Bruce and I went through this once before, years ago, and if, if, this has been a whole lot smoother up to this point than it was at that time, but I know we still got a lot, a lot to go through, which is a good thing. But yeah, I, I would be, I appreciate the additional with the one mile for elementary, I appreciate that, because I think that's really important, and the cost wasn't near what I thought it might have been. And I think there's a whole lot of other intangibles that go with this, other than just cost of tiers and the cost of that, of less cars at the facility, less traffic, less safety, I mean, more safety issue, better safety for our kids that are walking. So yeah, I, I would be totally supportive and would want a, a plan to implement the study that Transpar gave us, and, and how do we implement that, whether we do it all for next year, or we do some next year, some the next year. I think, I think the longer we wait, the less opportunity we have for next year to do something, and it's not an easy process. And I think there's some education that we gotta do community-wide with what this is gonna look like. I hope, you know, getting in, getting feedback and providing information, but I think it's good for kids, I think it's good for school, I think it's good for us as a district to do just what Transpar recommended. So I, I would, I want to keep the ball, I don't want the grass growing underneath this and, and keep it going. And yeah, I would be totally supportive of bringing something back to the next meeting to, to look at, and then we need to vote on it at the regular meeting, then vote on it, whatever the case may be.
And it may be as simple, Jerry, as saying, we're taking a stand that we, we want men to study it deeply and conduct focus, you know, do all the study work that needs to be done.
And I don't know whether, I don't know what the tiers are, I have no idea if it's 8.45, 9, I don't have any idea, I don't have any answers.
Right.
That's what staff can do, but I'd like for them to bring back a plan-
Right.
-to implement what Transpar gave us with those, basically what I would consider three, three things, high school, elementary, and choice. I think that's really important. The choice is, to me, critical, because I think that, we need that first, maybe?
To be included in the busing plan, is that what you mean?
Absolutely. Absolutely, it may be the higher priority, and I don't know what's the easiest to implement, that's, you guys know that, I don't, which is the easiest. To me, that's a huge thing for, to get choice programs for transportation. We've been talking about that for, since we've had choice, and-
Then it will truly be choice.
Then it will truly be choice.
As opposed to the appearance of choice, without the realistic possibility of doing it.
You know, it can be a three, three-tier implementation process. I don't know what's best for, for us to do that, that's not our call.
That's right. Others?
I, I think there's a lot of implications, so I don't, you know, we've done two studies, and there were reasons why the other study wasn't implemented at that time, and not because board members didn't think it might not be best for kids. That was not the reason why. It was community and people who said, no, this will disrupt our families to an extent that we're, we don't, you know, we had all the data we have now on what's better times. But I think, again, one of these things that, really, the devil is in the details. So I, this is a huge change, this will be a huge change, but it's not, oh gosh, we'll just move to another tier. All that means, starting times, that means the same number of buses will be running more miles. Hopefully, we can find drivers, hopefully, you'll have the money to replace those buses sooner, because we got to a point, at one time, we weren't replacing buses, like, so, I mean, I think all of those are reasons and that, you know, right now, we have, I don't know how, the percent of students eligible to ride and the number who ride, I don't know what that is, but we can probably kind of look at that to say, if we expand services, will it be at that same percent? Because I'm gonna tell you, there's some people that are not gonna put their child on the bus. They're, they're not gonna put their child on the bus. So therefore, we have to look at, okay, we're gonna expand services, we've got costs, we've got times, we've got dismissal times, we've got the issue of how do the buses get into our schools? Now, the car lines at some places are disrupt whole neighborhoods based on that. Bus lines might do the same thing. So I'm not against it, I'm for the things we're doing, but I'm not for rushing into this. I'm not for building this while we're flying, and that's sometimes what we've done with programs, and we've been able to adjust programs. You start a busing system and you implement it, you can't pull back from that busing system, because you're giving the people this tangible, and this is gonna be an amount of money that will be taken out of our budget annually from now on, long after we're not at this table. Somebody's gonna say, we're gonna build the budget, but here's what's gonna have to be in there for transportation, because we gotta pay the drivers, we gotta pay the, buy new buses, where, you know, there's a, all the national talk about seat belts on buses and what that's gonna mean. So I think, do we wanna do it? Sure. I, I have zero problems in saying I'm, I'm for it, but I'm also for us take, I'd like to know if we implement part of it next year or all of it. Whatever you do, what's the drop-dead date that we have to make that decision? Because transportation department's gotta do routes, they gotta make sure, maybe some of these people don't wanna drive buses, few tiers. We're taking that for granted. Maybe they don't even want, you know, maybe they like what they're doing now, and they don't wanna do, so that means more bus drivers, and we already have an issue with that. So, and it's not just, we'll raise the salary. You don't wanna drive a bus? I don't wanna drive a bus. One thing I probably have never done in a school system is, what schools, I've done, you know, I've cooked at chili suppers, but I've never driven a bus, and I don't understand why you would want to have your, all the people you're responsible for in your rearview mirror and not know what's going on. That would be a scary, scary deal. So I don't want to. And so I just think there are, it's, yes, it's a hard decision, is it the right decision? Yeah, it's the right decision to do right, not the right decision just to do something because we had the study and it needs to be done. I just wanna do it right, so that we understand the resources we're committing from SPS from now on, from now on, and it'll only, it won't be just that, we may have, we actually may have more magnet schools. I mean, we are gonna have one the next fall. So what does that mean? That's 150 kids, so really, what does that mean? You know, and so I wanna know those, I'm sorry, I, I wanna know the detail before I vote to say, it's not whether I think it's the right thing to do, it's, are we doing it the right way so we can continue to do that long after we're, we, all of us up here making this decision aren't here to vote? We're still gonna be here, we're just not gonna be voting. So I'm, I really don't want us to get, I just wanna make sure we're doing it correctly. I'd rather take more time and do it correctly. If we, if we need to take the vote to say we're, we definitely wanna do this, we just wanna do it the right way, is, so people can understand where we are.
Let me shoot that.
I, I just would like to say I appreciate Jerry and Bruce's comments. I enjoy hearing from our fellow board members. I will keep this very short. I appreciate the thoroughness of the report, the work that was done, that has been presented for us to review, with various options, pros and cons, and I also know the spirit of our board, and when we see something that can help our students, we're, we want to activate. You know, that's just the nature of wanting to say, let's go. But I also recognize, as the other board members do as well, the complexity of such a large shift, whichever way that may- a large shift, whichever way that may be, and the importance of taking time to get stakeholder feedback from all different groups, to study, to take the report and now study the impact in pulling this lever here and start times here, and what does that impact? It is, it is complex. And I believe us taking the right time, or the appropriate time, to study that, to get stakeholder feedback, much like we've done some of our other major projects. Because when, if or when a change comes, it has impact on a lot of different people, and we need to be very thoughtful in studying that and getting the experts from the district to the teachers, to the community partners, to the parents, to, you know, getting their impact on that. So, I'll leave it. I'll leave my thoughts at that.
Other comments?
Yeah, I would agree, and I respect the views of all of my colleagues. And I think we should take all the time that is necessary to get this right, but no more time than is, in fact, absolutely necessary. I mean, we can kick this can down the road for a really, really long time. We have to do it thoughtfully, but we shouldn't be hesitant, because inevitably, there will be, there will be concern, no matter what decisions, if any, we come to, there, there will be, there will be concerns. And one additional issue that I want to put out there is that all of the, the tier schedules here, and this may be too far in the weeds at this point, lead with elementary, high school, middle, or elementary, middle, high school, and, or no, high school, back, back it up and reverse it. And I sort of gestured it this last time, is the American Academy of Pediatrics suggests that high school probably ought to start later than others for academic and cognitive purposes. Now, as a morning person, I don't get that. I don't understand it, never have understood it. But there's, there's pretty substantial evidence, right, to that effect. And, and I understand the concern about extracurriculars and sporting practices and, and those kinds of things and impact on community partners. But I wouldn't want us to dismiss the potential cognitive benefits of starting high school later, right? Because I think implicitly, that's what it suggests, that the tail wags the dog. And I just overstated it to, to sort of make the point. So, I'd want that to be factored into it. And I just noticed, I must have missed it previously, I guess Columbia does that on their tiered system? Because high school starts between eight fifty-five and nine oh five, so unless middle and elementary school starts at lunchtime, I'm guessing high schools start later. So, it can be done, potentially. Now, whether or not it ought to be done in our circumstance is an open question. Because there will be impacts on whether it's, you know, the, the pre and after-school programs that we have with community partners and, and all of those kinds of things. So, there are lots of moving parts, and I just hope that we can get the right majority of moving parts moving in the same direction, and then we make a commitment. Because you're right, it's, it's going to outlast any of us. This decision will outlast any of us on the board. And I'm okay with that. I'm okay.
And I think our, on the high school issue, was that second tier is later, right? So, if it's in the middle tier, it's eight twenty, eight thirty, so it's thirty minutes later than we're currently starting. It's not nine, but it's not nine thirty. And the, I think that the, they did look at high school nine thirty option, but the price point went higher just because of tier. But we can, but we can bring it, yeah. We can shoot it back to you.
I'd like to see, and potentially talk, and we probably have an inside source, depending with Columbia, how they made that work. I don't know if they changed it at that.
They changed about five, eh, probably more than that, eight years ago, seven, eight years ago.
I'd be curious to get a sense of their experience, if that's possible.
Talking to their board members would be a great way to do that. Their administration has turned over since then, but the board are still there, so.
Comments on this side today?
Yeah.
Again, it's just one of those things.
I am a proponent of finding a way to provide more transportation. I recognize, as Alina pointed out when we started looking at this, this is extraordinarily complex. But I have a lot of faith in John and his team, that they'll put things together and they've looked at it six ways to Sunday. I, I also am a big believer that there is more than one way around any barn. So, I don't think there's just one magic way to do this. I recognize we can't find a way that everyone will love, because change is hard. But I'm committed to the change, because I think that we need to do better by getting our kids to school without walking across dangerous intersections. And that's not suitable to me, so I'm glad we're doing this.
Seems to me that what I'm hearing you guys say is, "Do the right thing, but do it the right way." I'm also, I also hear you guys say, "Don't rush this." And I hear a little bit of, "This is, this is a potential opportunity to make other things the way they should be." I hear that about, about start times for certain age groups, you know, this is, if you make this change, this is a time that you could consider something like that. It also seems to me that there will be a strategic communications role as we work through this, because so many people are going to be impacted. You look at the comments on Facebook that have already come out, where people said, "There is no way I can get to work on time." Well, that might mean there, that, you know, I, when I moved to Springfield, I came from a community that started work at eight thirty and ended at five thirty. Springfield is an eight-to-five town. It may, and I don't know why, but the start, the start time for school impacts the start time for business. I don't know if it's the other way around. And that is part of what we need to talk about. It just seems to me that this kind of initiative is equal, in some ways, to a bond referendum, in terms of scope and impact, and the kind of work and the kind of effort that it's going to take to get this done. The only difference is, we don't take this directly to the voters, but we will be taking it indirectly to the voters.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So, so, come to us next time with something to...
So, I'm going to need some guardrails, right? Not just, "Hey, come to us with something," but I need some more specifics, right? Because there's a lot of, a lot of room between what I heard at the table.
Come with really good something.
You're going to have to give me a little more meat, right? Right? So, what, and I can't have a plan laid out, right, Bruce? And that's not what I'm asking you. But give us a guardrail around what you're wanting to execute and some of the ways that you're willing to execute that. And then we can start to build, to Bruce's point, maybe a global, say, "The board wants to do this," and then a timeline for planning and a process that would create the community input, the strategic communications plan, reality of moving this whole, and I'll just say it right now, the whole tier system by next year, that's a zero, that's a zero starter for, for administration. Could we figure it out? But we'd be figuring it out, and that's not successful, right?
Yes, as we go.
We could figure it out, but it would be painful. So, I, I'm not ready to say that we'd be ready to execute anything on the third tier starting change times. We might be able to do some magnet expansion, maybe some alternative programming expansion next year. But the full study of partner impact, start times, looking at different tiering, right? That's going to take some time. So, guardrails, what are you, what are you saying is in the guardrail? So, I heard Jerry say earlier, "Take high school boundaries down," right? I mean, is that one of the guardrails? I mean, that's one of the, right? So, the guardrail would be the expectation to take three point five down to the one point five, which was the price point studied. Is that one of the guardrails? And then middle school would stay the same. We did not study any pricing structure to middle school shift of boundary. We're in the ballgame with it as compared to peers. And then, for now, right? I mean, that could be a step, it could be a further phase, right?
New phases.
So, I got high school from three point five to one point five. Then what about elementary? We had that as a secondary going from one point five to one, and it had a price point of anywhere between sixty thousand and four hundred, depending on the tier system that you chose, right?
Right. I think that, I would be interested in seeing that, and in ways that, that would not unnecessarily tie our hands subsequently, like not making decisions in phase one that make it more complicated to do the bigger issues, potentially, right, down the road. And for me, I do think the, the choice programs are important, both in terms of safety and equity. I think this is a tangible move toward equity.
Bruce, a gentleman.
When the cost was sixty-six to four hundred thousand, that couldn't be anything but salary.
Yeah, that's just operational cost, right?
That's just, so that can't, so really, that's not a, I mean, it seems like a no-brainer. Sixty-six thousand, we'll just reduce it. That can't be the whole cost, because you, you've got to have bus cost. You've got to, you have to have other costs.
There's no fleet expansion in that. So, the capacity of elementary buses right now aren't full, right? Because they run really tight, small routes around a lot of elementary schools, right? Middle schools and high schools, they fill, right? Because they run large routes, right? So, elementaries have capacities, that's why it's a small price point on the front end, and it really depends what tier structure you put them in. But you can fill those buses up with just some additional hours on driver's schedules, for the most part. Now, it may adjust a little bit of start time, because they're going to have to take a little more time to stop a few more times. But you're only talking about a half-mile radius change around those. So, that's, but there is no new bus cost. You can run it basically with the number of buses.
So, this shows the, the bus, basically, currently, we're at a hundred and thirty-two, and it would actually reduce our demand for buses on the street.
And then, and then the elementary is the next slide, Karen, we believe.
Yeah.
That's sixty-six to the four set forty-seven, but they said it could be run within any of those tiers without new buses, right?
That doesn't compromise any decisions down, downstream.
I think what we like also is, we don't want to...
Five to one point five, did I hear universal one point five to one point oh?
Yes.
Of bringing elementary down?
Yes.
I absolutely want to.
Okay.
And then I was going to say that we, we do not favor expanding the fleet.
Right.
And that we like the idea of the three tiers as a way to more efficiently use it.
Because there's only one way to do that, is to do a third tier, right?
I think your goal, you have three goals there. One is the high school, elementary, and choice. That's the end result that you want, those reduced. How you do that, whether that's tier structure, fleet, whatever, that's the how part.
Well, and that's what I, I need to...
And I know there's only one alternative.
Right, there's budgetary structure.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
If we cap out, right, and with, let's just do the quick math, let's assume the top number for four forty-seven, right, for the elementary cost, and we'll apply it to these other. So, for a three-tiered system, you're going to cap out at one million twenty-eight. For the magnet and the high school, you add the four forty-sevens, you're going to cap out at one point five operational cost for a three-tiered system. The other, you're going to cap out at five point four plus four forty-seven, so you're at five point eight. So, you've got a five point eight, run it the same way, and add fleet, or you've got a one point five cap, right? Those are two completely different scenarios. So, are you telling us that the only way to make these changes happen is within our fleet structure to what you said, and that's the only way to do that is a third tier? That's what I'm hearing. And now, we're not telling you what the start time would be, right?
My only concern with that is, you're giving us the answer right now?
Yeah.
As opposed to, I mean, I don't disagree that that's probably where we're going to end up. I agree.
Expert, we didn't do that.
Yeah, exactly.
That's what the experts told us.
But I, I've been a little, I don't want to be presumptuous to say, "This is how you're going to implement it at this point until you come back with a plan." I think it's going to say the same thing. I think it's going to be just what you just said. But I don't want to, oh, yeah, you have to have a three-tier plan, or I, I think that's...
At that, I'm going to need a budgetary limit.
Exactly.
Right?
Exactly.
Either, you either tell us, and that's a guardrail, you either say, "Cap out, budget here," or tell us the three-tier system.
Well, we would say one point five, you figure out how to do that.
Okay. A few options, and we can bring the high school option in.
Well, I just, I just have a hard, I have a hard time thinking this board, or any board, is going to want to spend five million more.
I don't see where we're getting dollars. I mean, it's four million add, right?
I'm willing to, I would be happy to, but I don't think we're going to.
We would be very challenged.
I still know that we have, we don't...
We don't have that time.
I would, I mean, I would not oppose it if we had the money sourced, knew where it was coming from and how that was going to happen, that's fine, and it would be an easy thing. But that's not the real world right at the moment.
And we can start to analyze the capital impact, to Bruce's point. Neither of those, within a one point five million dollar operational increase, is supposed to increase fleet, right? But it would increase miles run on the fleet. So, making sure that our replacement cycle is still good, which it is a good replacement cycle we've gotten on, but we'll want to check the mileage that they would draw to see if the replacement cycle would need to be shifted, to Bruce's point. And then the other capital expenditure is really the infrastructure at dropping zones. So, middle schools don't change, elementaries, for the most part, aren't changing, because they're running the same routes, just picking up a few more kids. High schools change, because we're putting more buses on those sites, right? So, and we know we're dropping some cars off, but those are things that we would have to study a little bit.
Practical question. With all this, as much as I would like to do something this fall, whatever that may be, I would like to have a plan back in two weeks. Like, that's what I'm saying, I would like that.
Create an outline.
My question is, that's not practical. And so, but I also don't want to just leave it open-ended, and we're just going to study the heck out of it for a while, and then nothing happens. So, I'm just trying to put, put boundaries on, how long do we wait before we can, can't do anything this coming school year? Or how, what's the earliest that's, I know, I don't want to put something and force a timeline that we do something just because it's, we want something and it's not a thought. I, I want it sooner than later, but as Bruce said, I want it right. And if that takes four weeks instead of two weeks, or six weeks instead of four, that's, that's okay. I just, and you don't have to answer that, I just, I just am looking for...
Again, the high school, there's no way for us to effectively flip that switch, because of all the rerouting and the things that are necessary. Elementary, potentially, you could add, expand some services potentially next year. We can study that to see if that's executable, but we don't want to make sure, we want to make sure that it doesn't screw up our ability to deliver the other thing. And we probably don't want to have two shifts of start times, right, on people, where they say, "Oh, you did that this year, and now you change it again next year." I don't know that you want to create two disruptions, right? So, we'll be, we'll look at that. And then the other is magnet access, and whether or not you could start with a magnet pilot access program. All the people that, and make sure that we're speaking right language when we say magnet is what's studied. Okay, that is our magnet sites, not all choice sites, right? Because we have open enrollment between buildings, right? That is a choice structure. That is not, right? We're talking about the magnet sites, right? What was studied are the magnet schools and the alternative site, and the others, if you choose to transfer to another building, even if there's a choice program in that, that is your transportation choice.
That's a really good classification.
So, I want to make sure that when we say, "You guys are using the word 'choice,'" that's not the word that we're using, right? What was studied is magnet, right?
I mean, if it's parental choice to transfer, if there's space available.
Yeah, that would be on there.
Right. These are the lottery sites, as well as the alternative program that currently doesn't have access to it, right? Which reduces its availability. So, so, magnet, three point five to one point five, one point five to one point oh, hold cost to a, kind of a one point five barrier as a starting point. Study the capital cost, right, of fleet and potential infrastructure, and then kind of build out a timeline, right, of what the process might look like for stakeholder engagement and those things. I guess our, we can start to work that up, and then the hope would be that we could bring that recommendation to you, you could bless the process that is built and the goals that were created, and then let us begin to run that process, right, through the, through a six-month planning phase or in, you know, implementation phase, with the hope of full implementation, twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And if there are some things we can get along the way next year, awesome. If there's not, then that's not the end of the world, because we know it's going to take time to do it right.
Did the magnet, did the transportation for magnet schools impact tiers, tier times at all? Is there any impact if we did?
Yeah, there was two different...
Did that drive tier time?
Yeah, so, if you look at magnet cost, if you just do mag, so if you go within our current structure, just do it without, without changing tiers, you see the difference. It's one point seven versus five sixty-nine.
Well, there is an impact.
You've got to get routes through the tier system in order to make magnet affordable, right? That makes, so...
Okay, I just want to make sure that that was...
And in the full report, they showed a number of other factors, a variety of start times and...
Yeah, so if you go back to the full presentation, you're going to see some of that, Charles, you may not, you may even have the other high school one in the full, it wasn't in the original slide deck, but in the full document, but we'll go back and check if not, we can have a bullet.
So, there's no changes that won't impact tier times in some respect?
Yeah. With the exception of potential, the elementary add, and it would probably affect it a little bit, but we'd have to go back and look at it, so.
So, next month, in summary, Board President, next month, we would be, as a board, making a motion to ask the administration to move forward with the plan... a motion to ask the administration to move forward with the plan and process to then come back to us with some proposals. Is that the understatement?
Within a, within a set of guidelines, an implementation plan within a set of guidelines that you guys all kind of say, this is what we core believe in. I tried to capture that, make sure we get that. And then we could start to run the process of, is it high school first? Is it middle? We're not, we're not putting that in the recommendation, right? So we get it with the stakeholder engagement group and say, start to bring everybody to the table and say, what's the best? And then we bring, and then the final recommendation to say, this is what we believe is there.
After all of this.
And that final recommendation may not come out till a year from now.
Yeah, it could be easily a six, eight-month process, right? By the time we, you know, build out the tiers, build out the routes, look at the timing, all of those things. Will take some time.
You've got a timeframe with budget, the budget process coming up.
Exactly.
Something that it kind of puts a constraint, not a constraint, but an opportunity or a timeline to have, because otherwise you wait another year.
Have it ready for the budget season.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think that's important. I mean, as I said, take all the time that's necessary to get it right. No more time.
Don't drag it out where it's going to...
We will talk ourselves off the ledge if we let it go.
I don't think there's any reason it could not be wrapped for next budget season, ready in the fall, right? Because if we decided to proceed, we would want to give the community plenty of time to plan and react.
Exactly.
So if we could support it next December or January, then they've got six months to change scheduling, work on their programming, all of those kind of, or six to nine months.
We work with businesses to talk about start times, yeah.
So did I miss anything that's a, so high school shift, elementary shift, middle school same, hold fleet size, magnet expansion, hold price down likely through a three-tier model, build a timeline, capital research? Anything else that I'm missing?
We comprehend it.
Yeah, pretty small plan.
What are you going to do with your free time?
Fight charter schools.
And so we would bring something back to the study session for first read and then...
We'll bring a document for you to review at study session next month that says, here's where we are. And you can tell us, yeah, you're on the right path or...
It's kind of your plan to plan.
Right, there you go. Continue, we'll keep it on the agenda. We continue to ask for your feedback, so.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
All right, then we come to my favorite part of the board meeting, the bond project updates and actions. And for that, we welcome Dr. Shaw. Welcome, Travis.
Good evening.
Hello.
So first item, as usual, is the change order and agreements list. It's very small tonight. A couple of those represent some inspections that are needed on the last property that we purchased with the, around the Boyd property, as well as the Hillcrest school to determine if there is any asbestos or lead-based paint. And then we also see a credit from Crossland on the reinstallation of playground equipment at Delaware. That was part of their contract, but due to the work that we're doing with our playground contractors, it's going to be shifted as part of their normal work. We do have some equipment that we can reuse that's in really good shape that's A-accessible for that school. And so that's why you see that credit. So you can see the different design contingency availability for Hillcrest and Boyd, which is where these inspections come out of, as well as the construction that's being added back to Delaware. Questions I can answer for you?
Questions for Travis? The recommended actions, the board approved change orders and agreements suspended. We ready to vote on this?
Yes, so moved. Second.
Thank you. Motion's been duly made and seconded, now we vote. Thank you.
You're doing great.
It's the cold medicine.
Yes. Is that all you have?
No.
No, no, no. We're just getting going here.
I'm ready.
Eyes have it.
Oh, sorry. You got that first.
So the next item deals with technology equipment that Bruce and his team, part of the equipment that they've compiled together. You can see that this represents items like patch cables, wire management, or wall brackets, ladder brackets, et cetera. I'm not going to go through all of the list. I left a lot of things off. But it represents a total for these three schools of $253,678.94. You can see in front of you the individual elements for the Fulbright Early Childhood Center, Sunshine, and Delaware. And I also wanted to view below that what the actual availability for what we call FFNE, which is our furnitures, fixtures, and equipment. And that's where these items fall under. So you can see that we're just beginning this process. Hopefully by March 10th, I'll have a lot of furniture and equipment that I can bring to your attention for approval. But this is just the beginning. And Bruce will probably have one more list of technology that will be coming as well. But these all fit well within the FFNE budgets that we've established for these projects.
Fantastic. Any questions for Travis on this? Recommended action is that the board approve the purchase of technology equipment as presented in the Ford Fulbright Early Childhood Center, Sunshine, and Delaware. Alan Melries.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Denise. There, second.
Second.
Thank you, Charles. We ready to vote? Please vote. And now we get the slideshow.
Pictures.
It's picture time.
Picture time. This is where we need to be. Okay, so it's that time again, three months later, for my quarterly update for you on our projects. And as we work through this presentation, you'll see the same type of items. I just want to give you an update of where all of our projects are. We are actually in different stages of all seven of our projects, as well as secure entrances. This is the sequencing plan that you're accustomed to seeing. If you can see the 2019, 2020 section there in the middle, the green again represents the construction that's taking place. And yellow represents the design and bid. This gives you a better idea of where we are. We know that we are currently under construction, which I'll show you some pictures here just in a few minutes with the Early Childhood Center, Delaware, and Sunshine. Boyd is in the process of construction drawings. I'll give you that updated timeline here in just a few minutes, as well as Jarrett and Hillcrest are also in construction drawing phase. And then Williams is finishing up this month, hopefully the design development phase, which then will take us into construction drawings as well. The secure entrances, and here's our sequencing plan here. We had 19 that we have finished and 14 that are beginning to get into that construction phase. Highlighted schools represent those that have completed construction. The others, as you can see, are of the 14 that just went out. So I wanted to give you kind of a sneak peek of some of them that we've got going. This is not glamorous, nor is it pretty. But this is the work that has to go on first in order to retrofit these older buildings to where they meet the safety standards that we have today. And so that's Field Elementary. You can see McBride. There's a lot of work that gets done above ceilings. They take out walls. We had to deal with different aspects of load-bearing things, HVAC units, a lot of different pieces here. You can see Holland, they've actually had to take block wall apart. Pitman, again, a lot of different variations. And so we are working through that demo process. And then we'll begin giving in all of our storefront, all of our different components to make this work with our access control systems and so forth. And finally, Disney. So some updates for the Early Childhood Center. The caveat to these pictures is, when I get them and go to put this together, they end up being about two weeks old by the time you get them. This work is moving. I was just out at ECC today, and it's just amazing the amount of progress that we see. As long as we can keep the silly water away, we can get work done. But here's just a viewpoint from the south, or sorry, the north side of that building. You can see it's quite extensive, the two, two-level piece of it. We will have everything, they told me they, everything at least under roof, not siding, but under roof, within a couple of weeks. And that really makes a difference with what we can get done. All of the concrete in this facility has been poured, and those guys can get out of the way. Delaware Elementary, this, they're doing these in phases. If you remember on the floor plan, it kind of had four spokes. And so they're working on each spoke, and then they continue to move toward Delaware Street. So they've got a lot of exterior bracing and you can see the studs that are going up. So a lot of work. It's hard to see from the ground level, but I'll give you a bird's eye view here in just a little bit. So Sunshine, we've got steel going up. Most of that steel is already erected at this point. That's the storm shelter. That has panels. Took about six or seven days to construct that. And they do have that down, and they're actually almost finished up with all the steel on the inside. So a lot of progress on those three projects. So Boyd, one of the things that I wanted to update for you was a little update on the rendering. There has been some color changes on the brick, a bit of color change on the materials for the columns. I think it's an improvement from where we had that, but, and then this is the one that's right on the doorsteps of coming out to bid. It'll come out the end of March. So a little over a month away, that one goes out to bid. And then anticipated bid opening 30 days later with a recommendation for you all early part of May. And that's again, the reminder of the total project budget of a little over $20 million. Jarrett Middle School, again, that one's in the construction drawing phase. Wanted to just give you some updates on that, just as a reminder. And then also the timeline for that. We will begin that demo at Portland because we know that one's being built on the Portland site. That does have asbestos tile, much like Delaware. So we do the asbestos piece first, we do the demo after that. Meanwhile, we'll have bid opening and we'll be ready to go as soon as that's done. That is a two-year project. The architects are telling us realistically, probably about 20 months. So that's good news to hear. That allows us some flexibility, which we like. Hillcrest is in the same similar timeline as what Jarrett is. You get to see that rendering again. We, the water line transform, if you want to call it, the relocation of that is actually out to bid right now. We've got to relocate a water line there. We'll be doing some things in phases with that project because, one, it's a construction management at risk project, which allows us to be able to do some phasing. But it also allows, because that's a phasing with students and staff on campus, we will have to do something with those bids. But again, that one's scheduled for the summer as well. Two years, yes.
Is that the water line you speak of between the Hyatt and the...
That's correct. There's a water line that runs between there. And so that has to be moved so that we can tie the building together and make it the secure campus that we need. So Williams, first time that you'll have the opportunity to see some preliminary plans with Williams. And so as we do with these slides, want to again point out where that site is. That sits on West Carney Street. It's an expansive site of almost 16 acres. Don't let the lot, the big portion of land to the north mislead you quite a bit. So it's not a very buildable space, but it is a lot of space in that, so there's a lot of different opportunities that we have there. So the first thing I wanted to point out with this, and so I'm going to, I'll say some things with, because I know it's a little bit hard to read, but the red section represents an actual boys and girl location for us. And we have the opportunity to work with Boys and Girls Club. We're working through the MOU now. They've already begun to work on their fundraising to pay for all of that. But it's a little over 4,000 square feet that they will have for their dedicated space, as well as they will be able to utilize space within our facility before and after. It's a great opportunity for them on that side of town, which is a great need. One of the things that I love about this site plan is some challenges that we have at Williams currently is the parking and the car queuing. It's a mess at the end of the day. And so we are able to, because of the expansive site, we're able to bring that further north. We have a lot that's available. We can bring buses in, get a separate location on the front part of it. And we also, because this has a pre-K mini hub, that there is a loop on the west side of the facility just for pre-K because the pre-K sits. I'll show you the floor plan in just a little bit on that side. A lot of opportunity there. This is a renovation with addition. I will tell you that that scope has changed some throughout this process. As we began working with the architects and the construction management team, what we found was that there was, that the overall condition of the building, including the infrastructure, was in very, very poor shape and would require extensive amount of work, both interior and exterior. And that created challenges for us to be able to meet the program needs of that facility, which would then result in additional square footage being added. And then when we started getting cost comparisons, it just made a lot more sense to renovate less and build new. You will see that there is some scope change because of that. So these renderings are very early. So this just kind of gives you a depiction of where the new entrance will be. Right now, the new entrance, the entrance is currently in the middle of the building, facing Carney. This one sits kind of on the corner of Carney, and I never can refer to Side Street. But it gives great access to where the car queuing comes in and the parking. You'll also see on that end, we now have Boys and Girls Club, separate entrance, ADA accessibility, one of our main focuses, renovated space that they will have to be able to bring in, a secure entrance for all of their students, which will be a great location for them before and after school. And this just kind of gives you another view. So let's take a look at the floor plan. This will give you kind of an idea of what it entails. You can see the Boys and Girls Club area in the tan brownish color on the top. And so they have their own dedicated space coming in. We have the storm shelter, gymnasium, that sits in the middle. We have office space directly to the right as people would enter, and an expansive area for events when people come in, that it's not this crowded, convoluted space. But we also have the public spaces as soon as people come in, the media center, there's an art room, there's the cafeteria area and kitchen, as well as an entrance that goes right into the gymnasium. You'll see different hubs. You've got the pre-K hub that sits down on the bottom left corner. Again, north of that is the K1 hub, and then two, three, and four, five. And so really systematically laid out to, we can have collaborative spaces, we can have flexible spaces outside of the classroom for a lot of different things, but also to be able to keep those, those groups together and have great flow of the building. So I think the architects have done a great job up to this point. It's been valuable having a construction management team on this project as we've crept, because we're finding things through this project that we would not have found until it's later in the game. And then it really creates issues with timelines, so. And finally, the schedule. So we're in design development. That'll finish up in February. We anticipate this to go out to bid part of the summer with demolition beginning as soon as school gets out. There is a little bit of asbestos in that building. Some of it's being taken care of over spring break. And some of it is on the exterior of the building, which will not affect things that go on inside in the first week. So we're going to be able to tackle that one really quickly. The VAT tile out of our buildings has already been removed previously in previous years. This is a year-long process. You can see the total project budget, hopefully recommendation of the bid for you in July. So, and finally, wanted to be able to give you, as promised, a little bird's eye view of the work that has taken place up to this point. So Springfield really is a beautiful place from the air, especially in the fall. So any questions that I can answer for you?
Questions for Travis? Comments? I, I want to make a couple of comments that regarding Williams, I know there's been maybe a little bit of controversy raised about the two, demolish the original building. But Denise and I will remember from our participation in the Community Task Force on Facilities that Williams was one of those where it, the Community Task Force had a hard time deciding whether that should be a, a rebuild or, or a renovation. We've got to remember that every building was evaluated on both condition and suitability, and a price was assessed, a cost was assessed, assessed for each approach, and it was just so similar that suitability out in this one, and that a newer facility that would be designed for 20th century standards is the better value. I guess the other thing that I would state is a personal belief, that the mission of the school district is to educate students. It is not to preserve buildings. If we can preserve buildings in doing our best efforts to educate students, then good on us. But no amount of nostalgia, no amount of wonderful memories is going to take precedence, I think, over our mission to educate the, the future generations. So I just felt like this was the right time and place to say that, because as, as an architect who has done a number of preservation and restoration projects, they have their time and they have their place, and I fully back the approach that the district's taking with Williams.
Good.
Yeah.
Anything else for Travis?
Thank you for the debate.
All right, the next, the next item on the agenda is public comments to address non-agenda items, and we have no comments, thank you. So we go right into administration, John.
Very good. Carol?
I will remind you that we do have one more interview we'll conduct, and that is on purchasing. And it will, the field work will begin in about six weeks or so. Also, they will begin their risk assessment in preparation for recommendations for the upcoming audit, and they will be seeking your feedback in that regard as well. And then I also would like to provide you an update. Doleing School property, we have issued the request for information process again, we're utilizing the services of Sperry Van Ness, and Jeff Childs is running that process. We released the publication February 13th, and a pre-proposal meeting for interested parties will be held here in this room on 3/27 at 3:00 PM, and then any proposals to be submitted to Sperry Van Ness will be due Tuesday, April 14th at 3:00 PM prior to the board meeting for you. So that's an update. Thank you.
That's our last remaining.
That is our last remaining property.
Um, work continues with the EDA committee, still finalizing recommendations, those will be coming soon. As part of my listening and learning tour, I'll be visiting all the elementary schools, as well as our choice programs and our early developmental, development centers. I'm also facilitating diverse student forums at all the high schools to kind of just understand what our students experience, and engage kind of what they're looking from this position as well, and I'm also facilitating those sessions with Tony Robinson and NOSCP as part of a community collaboration.
Do you have a question?
Yep.
Doing it during school hours or after school or?
During school hours, so the principal helped me select student designated at the time that would fit with the students.
Just want to let you know about our TSPS spring event, it's scheduled for March 2nd, 4:30 to 6:30 at 425, the 425 Event Center here in town. It's an informal event where we invite all those who are interested in the district to come out, get to know us.
Get to know the district. A very informal setting, and so you're welcome to drop in, and please invite anyone that you know who's interested in teaching for SPS to join us that evening.
So our second installment in Focus, which is our connect with internal and external groups, was out this, this last week, and it focuses on progress as promised. So we had Dr. Jungman and Dr. Shaw walk through some of the construction underway and provide an update on each of those. So we've had good response from the community on that piece. Explore Guides, our field guide for high school, as well as for elementary, working very closely with our experiences team to make sure that our students and families and community are aware of them and exciting opportunities this summer. And they have been delivered to all the schools, they've gone home with students. We have distribution sites in the community, we'll be leaving some of these behind, emails have gone out, and then registration will begin on March 2nd, and we'll be staggered by grade, so that's coming up. The Academy of Fine and Performing Arts Lottery is underway, the deadline to apply is March 7th. The team hosted a parent informational night, and making sure that, that opportunity is being communicated and shared. And finally, our work group, which is helping us lead the strategic work of Focus Area Four, met on February 7th for the first time. We had representation of teachers, principals, department leaders, parents, others in the community, began a great dialogue, got some good feedback, and we'll be narrowing our focus as we meet again for the second time at the end of the month, so that work is...
Nothing new for me, and I'll just move to legislative update. That's quick. I know you are getting lots of alerts from MSBA currently, three big bills this week, Senate Bill 649, 581, and 525. They did not take them up today, but there is a high likelihood, I do believe, that they'll take them up tomorrow. Chance to engage with your senators regarding those bills, this would be a perfect opportune time tomorrow morning to start your day that way. I'll also be at the Capitol tomorrow to work on those issues and observe the debate and engage with our, both our senators and our representatives regarding those, as well as many other we have on our radar, but those are kind of the high-flying three this week. Is that for me?
All right, John. Board comments. Any, any board member wish to make a report on your activities in the community or anything? All right. Let me announce a few upcoming meetings. Tomorrow morning is the Springfield Metro Partnership Breakfast up in Jeff City, and I know John will be there, I don't know if anybody else is planning on being there. And this month is the Springfield Council of PTA Founder's Day Banquet, which is Thursday, February 27th. February 27th at 6:00 PM at Kickapoo. And then we meet again as a board on March 10th, 5:30 PM for a study session. The agenda that night? Excuse me? Is there anything on the agenda that night? Oh, there might be. There might be. All right, so the next item is just a reminder to share any thoughts on tonight's meeting with the board officers, through the secretary, with your plus delta commentary. And we do have an executive session tonight, I know you're shocked, but we do, and recommended action is that the board meets an executive session to discuss legal, real estate, and personnel manage matters, as provided in Section 610.02, Subparagraph 1, 2, 3, and 13 of the revised statutes of Missouri, is there a motion?
Cement.
Thank you, Lena, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Charles. Are we ready to vote? Participation and attendance tonight, thank you, and have a good evening.